Good evening, everybody. We'd like to welcome everybody to the June 15, 2017, meeting of the Large City School District of Middletown. It is our last regularly scheduled meeting of the 2016-17 school year. I apologize for everyone who's here in the audience for delaying you for a good 45 minutes, as is typical towards the end of the year. The Board had a lot of business to discuss in executive session, so thank you for bearing with us this evening. At this time, if you could please rise, and our pledge of allegiance this evening in Mr. McElroy's last school board meeting, if you can lead us in the pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any moments of silence?
We do, yeah.
If you can remain standing, please, for some moments of silence.
Moments of silence this evening. The first moment of silence is for Mrs. Susan Body. And Mrs. Body, a past board member, she was elected to the Middletown Board of Education for three five-year terms, and she arguably served in one of the most difficult times for the district. She served on a number of committees. Additionally, Mrs. Body was involved in a number of community activities. The second moment of silence this evening is for Roger Brett Vale. Roger was not a staff member, but he was one of my first students when I returned from service. Passed away, it was in the paper, untimely death at a young age. Roger was a student in the '60s, and my career in the trenches, so to speak, encompasses a number of decades. People ask me, what was the toughest era to teach in? At least in my experience, it was the '60s, because you had the Vietnam War, you had racial strife in the country, you had political assassinations, and this all was reflected in the schools. We were at the A.J. Verratti Junior High School, present site of the high school. However, it was one quarter the size, and we had around 1,500 students in that building, no security to speak of. Roger was always pleasant to have in class. He did the work expected of him. He never complained, very well respected in the community as judged by the number of people at the visitation. So please remember Susan Body and Roger Brett Vale in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Next up is the mission statement, and I want to thank our district clerk, Mrs. Clark, for selecting Mr. McElroy to do the pledge and myself to do the mission statement, since it's our last school board meetings this evening. But what's special about the mission statement is that we started reciting our mission statement at school board meetings during my first presidency with the Board about five years ago, and if everyone, those who were on the Board can remember, it was a result of Horace Belton.
Right.
Who came to one of our meetings and said, you know, you guys have a great mission statement, and I think it would be appropriate if the school board read that mission statement prior to each Board of Education meeting to confirm what we're all here to do at the table each and every year. So, in honor of Mr. Belton, "We strive to provide a fiscally sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to be competitive, productive members of society." Roll call, Mrs. Clark.
Crescenzo?
Here.
Estrada?
Here.
Knapp?
Here.
Mr. McElroy?
Here.
Mr. Perino?
Here.
Mr. Pierre?
Here.
Ms. Tobiasin?
Here.
Pastor Williams?
Here.
I need a motion to approve this evening's agenda. Moved by Pastor Williams, seconded by Mrs. Knapp. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. I need approval for the regular minutes of June 1, 2017. Moved by Mr. Crescenzo, seconded by Mrs. Knapp. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Recognitions, announcements, and community reports. Before we get to the Board, do we have any? You don't have any recognitions outside, right, from the school district perspective?
John?
I have a recognition, yeah. I have two recognitions.
As part of your regular report, or do you want them earlier?
I'd like to do this earlier.
You're all set, then.
Thank you.
Cool.
And I'd like President Estrada and Board Member Darryl McElroy to come up to the podium.
Oh.
Are we on this? Okay. On behalf of the Board of Education, Darryl, we give you this, and you can open it now. Mr. Estrada, President Estrada, on behalf of the Board of Education, this is yours. In my opening out, I have just a few remarks. Ed was elected in 2003, arguably the lowest point in this district. We had a graduation rate at that time of 52 percent. Today, the graduation rate is 85 percent plus. Ed played a major, significant role in transforming this district by not only supporting and encouraging various programs, but the work of the administration and district, dealing with various crises, and serving on a number of important committees. Darryl, you were elected in 2014, correct? You also supported the work of the district. You serve and are serving on a number of committees, including the very important Policy Committee, which Mr. Estrada chairs. You also serve on the, as Chair of the Change Order Committee. And you both supported the various programs of the district. And I think the best way for the people to understand these programs, and it's on our website, if you could read the study, impartial study conducted by Dr. Dale Mann, Managing Director of Interactive Incorporated, entitled "The Successful Turnaround of a High Poverty, High Minority School District." And both you and Darryl supported the following programs, but not limited to these programs: the two-year kindergarten program, Blended Learning Program, Personalized Learning, the ChromeBIC program, The Race to the Top, the Super Program, in which we, for the people who don't know, who may be watching, our high school students can obtain as many as, how many theory? Over 100 college credits, which are accepted at about 99 percent of the colleges and universities. You supported the various grant programs brought in by the superintendent and the administrative staff. You're always very positive of this, and this has resulted in $139 million of district grants coming into this district since 2005, when the superintendent took over. And Ed, you were there for these grants. You both supported the enhancement of facilities and building programs in the district. And Ed, you were there for the building of this Presidential Park, the building, of course, we're in right now, and as you know, it was a very difficult slog. It didn't come easy, this building. Every time I come in, and I'm sure you do too, I get, I have a smile on my face, seeing what a great facility is. Both you and Darryl, you supported the addition, the new addition to the MHS, the high school, and the enhancement of virtually all our other facilities. And all these programs, if you tally them up, resulted in about $169 million of construction and enhancement since 2005, with only approximately $10 levy on our taxpayers for 12 years, if I'm correct on that.
Capable projects.
I just want to say, it's been a pleasure and a privilege working with you, Ed, and with you, Darryl. Thank you. I'll put the superintendent on now for a minute or so.
Thank you, John. Ditto.
So I'm gonna, during recognitions, announcements, and community reports, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have Mr. McElroy and myself go first, so we're gonna cut line over everybody, and then we'll move on to the rest of the Board members. Mr. McElroy, your recognitions, announcements, and community report.
I wanted to thank Mr. Perino for those remarks, and for Dr. Eastwood for his brief remarks. You know, much like George Washington, I wrote a little something, which I guess would be akin to a farewell address. You know, as my term on the Middletown School Board draws to a close, I wanted to share a few thoughts about my time on the Board that will hopefully be relevant and helpful to, you know, future members of the Board of Education. I'm very proud of my service to the Middletown School community over the last three years. I view my role as a school board member, first and foremost, as an advocate for public education. With each vote I took on the Board, including most recently the resolution in opposition to the Education Secretary Betsy DeVos, I tried to think about how I was helping to advance the cause of public education. We've been able to, at this board table, pass budgets that were fair and protected programs and staff to the best of our ability, given the constraints, the financial constraints that we were under, settle fair contracts for bargaining units, and begin very important upgrades that Mr. Perino had referenced to our buildings, such as the one that's going to open up this fall at the high school, which I think is gonna be a marvel around the county. This district does so well because of the commitment of the teachers, the administration, the staff, parents, students, and community members, who are all working together to provide the best public education that the community can offer. It's not inexpensive, but it is necessary to invest in our future, and it is vital that we continue to support public education, even in times of fiscal distress. We depend on our young people to be well-rounded and civic-minded. Whether we have children or not, whether we are educators or not, or whether we see the direct benefit of our taxes or not, we all benefit from having a well-educated citizenry. I'm also proud of the fact that we were able to set a good example for our community at this board table. We engage in serious discussions about budget and policy, and we disagreed without being disagreeable. And I wrote this in advance of yesterday, so it might seem like it was timely or something like that, but we all do need to reflect on how we can advance our beliefs in a way that respects others who do not share our beliefs. And that's true here, and that's true out in public, and I think our country is gonna be a lot better off if that's the direction that we go in. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't question what's presented to us, especially as Board members, or that we are not allowed to dissent. I voted with majority on a lot of things, and I've sometimes been the lone dissenter. And I'm not trying to gain any sympathy or suggest that I'm a martyr. When I voted, I tried to do what I thought was right, and it's not always easy, because there are a lot of interests to balance. For me, it's kind of a unique situation, because I'm an active teacher, I'm in service still, I'm a union leader in my district, and so I bring that perspective to the table, but I've also, you know, been able to learn a lot and see things from the other side. You thought you seen everything when you sit on a board, it's, it's an eye-opener, to say the least. But in the end, I never tried to shy away from something just because it was unpopular or because it was not the position of this or that person. And so, you know, I would offer a little unsolicited advice to incoming Board members to be as fair-minded as they possibly can be, and to be independent thinkers. You're the elected representatives of the public, and ultimately, you have to, you know, make a lot of important decisions for the future of the district. I would like to thank the community for giving me this opportunity three years ago. I thought there was gonna be a competitive election, and I still have signs, I think, in my closet, so who knows what I'll use those for. But I would also like to thank my fellow Board colleagues for their help and guidance throughout the last three years. They were very welcoming and helpful, because this is not easy. There is a learning curve, and even being in education as I am, there's still a lot, you know, to learn. I'd also like to thank the administration, Dr. Eastwood, Mr. Del Moro, Mr. Tuttle, Mr. Scott, Mrs. McKean, wherever she may be, hopefully having a nice time golfing. That's, that's a good thing to do, yeah, right? But they, but they were very helpful and supportive, they, you know, would answer any question you had, and, you know, I do appreciate, you know, their support over the last three years. Also, thank you to the teachers and staff and other administrators throughout the district, whose work in the trenches is invaluable. Lastly, of course, I'd like to thank my wife Jennifer and daughters Samantha and Saoirse for indulging me over the last three years. It is not easy to, you know, have these Thursday nights out, and it's not easy for her to have to manage two small children, well, one's 11, but, you know, it's still, still could be a difficult thing to manage. It's definitely gonna be nice to have more time at home with family in the near future. And congratulations, of course, and many thanks to Ed Estrada for his long service to the district as a Board Member, twice President. You know, it's, it's been a pleasure serving with you these last three years. All right, I already said this last piece, so the last, last thing I will say, and then I'm done for, for now, anyway. While I might not be on the Board in the next few weeks, I am still gonna be an active member. I'm a parent of a future seventh grader and a future first grader, and I will certainly be an advocate, as I always have been, for public education. Just don't expect me to be at the microphone in the very near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McElroy. Now, where do I start? It's gonna be very difficult for me. 14 years is a long time. I was in my 30s, and I did not have gray hair, that's for sure. First, to the crew behind the scenes, the Gertex to my left, both here and at the stadium, and we'll see you next week at graduation. You guys work hard. Thank you for making me look good, and there's not much else I can say. Please know that you guys are appreciated by every member of this school board, each and every day, every time we have a meeting, every time our computers don't work, when something goes wrong. I know that that is appreciated, not only by the Board of Education, but our faculty and our staff, and Dr. Eastwood and our administration. So, when you go home tonight, put your head on the pillow, please know that we all think you guys do an outstanding job, so thank you for what you've done. To our teaching staff, some of you I've known practically my whole life, from high school, Mrs. Sorrentino, and some of you are fairly new, but keep fighting the battle. This is not an easy district to work for, not because of administration or anything, but because of the challenges that each of our students face. We don't have the easiest student population to teach. I don't see that as a detriment. I think that is a fabulous story and a challenge for us to try to educate some of the most challenging students that this country has to offer. It's easy to go and teach or administer a building where you have a 98 percent graduation rate, and students don't face the poverty that our students face, they don't face the language barriers that our students have to face. Embrace that challenge, because at the end of the day, that's what makes you feel good at night, in my opinion, and I hope that that's what you guys carry from here. You know, Mr. Johansson, welcome to Middletown. We'll officially approve you in a little bit. You already have a leg up, because Syracuse University, Syracuse University, you know, had he been a Georgetown grad, who knows where this district would be 14 years later? So, you know, I hope, we consider everybody here part of the Mitty family. Long after you leave, you will still be part of the Mitty family, and I hope you get that feeling when you begin your work here at Middletown. Mrs. Clark, thank you very much for making my job very easy as President this past year. It's Mrs. Clark's first year. She did two elections, two voting elections this year, which are not easy to do. She faced every challenge. I don't think anybody on the Board has felt a hiccup this year, as we've transitioned from another long-term district clerk. I hope you're here for a very long time, and for our appreciation from the Board. We'd like to give you this for your work. And I'll start off with Mr. Pierre, Mr. McElroy, who were my walking buddies during the last election, as our terms came up at the very same time. Each of you bring, and this is really the strength of this Board of Education, everybody here has a different, unique perspective. You don't have nine educators up here. You have bankers, you have policemen, you have nurses, you have, we had an architect on here, we have a pastor on our Board, we have teachers, retired, special ed, we have everything up here, and we all tap into each other's strengths. The moment you get into this position and you think you know everything, is the minute everything starts to fall apart. You know, I rely on educational matters to the teachers who sit on this Board. When Andy Warren was on here, we relied any building stuff to the architect, because he was our architect. Lou is our law enforcement guy. Our community contact, Pastor Williams to my left, our nurse for health, Mrs. Knapp, our retired librarian, Mr. Tobiasin, our good labor guy, Mr. McElroy. But, you know, you guys bring a lot of perspective, a lot of interesting points. Like I said, we don't always agree. Darryl called me crazy a couple minute, about an hour ago, and that's fine, you know, and I told, he apologized for it, I said, no, you were right the first time. So, you know, those are the good discussions, and why we were late for 45 minutes, because we have those discussions, but at the end of the day, we come to this table, and we all realize that it's part of majority, and we go with the flow, you know, and that's what good boards do. Good boards don't hold brudges, good boards don't go to sleep talking about each other, they move on to whatever's next on the agenda. So I want to thank you guys for living out this last term with me, and Lou, continued success moving forward. As I mentioned in my notes, I gave a note to each Board Member this evening, I think you would be a vital cog as far as the Board transitioning from an old Board, not saying that all of us are old, but to a newer Board and newer faces that I think we need moving forward. Pastor Williams, we've known each other for over 35 years. You are an integral part of this community. I hope you continue on your Board service as your children go through the system. You have a beautiful family, and your passion for them comes out, and that's the passion I have from mine, so keep that. We don't all here, we've all had children go through the, while we're sitting on the Board, and we've done a good job of making sure that their personal issues don't become the issues here at the board table. So, continued success. I think you would be, would be an outstanding leader in the future for the Board, and helping, you know, maintain those contacts with our community that sometimes when you're sitting on the Board for a long period of time, you lose. So we need to get grounded to that stuff. So thank you and good luck moving forward with you and your family. Mr. Crescenzo, we've done two tours of duty together. Vince and I were first elected in 2003 together, and he was smart enough to take a respite for a short period of time before coming back. Keep your civic activism, because it's sorely needed in this day and age. When somebody tells you to lose it, tell them, okay, thanks, and then go right back to it, because I think that's important to have. Please let everyone coming in new to the Board tap into your experience and the way you handle things, because I think that's a valuable asset to the Board. Ms. Tobiasin, you came in the year after me with Mr. Geiger. You have a great perspective with what's going on in the community, and you let it be known, and that's an important asset to keep moving forward. It's gonna need, this body's gonna need your experience moving forward, and hopefully you continue to do that at every turn, but more importantly, keep on cruising with Brian around the world and enjoy life as you see it. And Mr. Perino and Mrs. Knapp, I don't know why Mrs. Knapp always thinks that we're always like this, because I said earlier today that, you know, yeah, we fight a lot, but we fight like my, like she's my sister. And I came on the Board the year after, well, John, you had been on a couple years before?
Couple years.
Couple years, and Linda as well. They came in on the back end of what was the worst time in the history of this school district. When you have CNN vans parked in front, that's never a good sign, and that's what this school district faced. I had never been to a school board meeting in my life before January of 2003, when the former superintendent got arrested. And the reason why I started coming to school board meetings was because I was sick and tired of seeing the district I graduated from being bashed in the news media 24/7. I thought the Board of Education at that moment in time was getting short-changed in the coverage, not that there couldn't have done things in a better way, but it was sad to see, and it was sad to see that the community had lost faith in its school Board, it had lost faith in its school district. So somebody said, you know what, we like what you had to say, please run. And I ran in May, and Mr. Crescenzo and I, it must have been about six or seven people, or five or six people that ran that year, and unbeknownst to, I think Vince and I at the time- And unbeknownst to, I think Vince and I at the time, until we found out after the election, was that whoever was the top vote getter had to immediately take office the next day because one of the board members was going to retire. Typically, we don't come on until July first. And I think I edged out Vince by a couple of votes only. It wasn't that much. So, I had to take office the next day. And the meeting started at five in the afternoon. And I got home at about two-thirty in the morning from that first meeting. And my wife said, "What the F did you get yourself into?" And I said, "I don't know, and fourteen years later, I'm still here." So, you know, we had that first graduation, and I've talked to Mr. Del Moro about it. It was a rainy day, so it was held at Twin Towers. And there were about two-hundred-and-sixty-some-odd graduates that year. And I said, "Where are all the kids?" There were three-eighty in nineteen eighty-four when I graduated. So, I'm like, "What happened?" So, do we have a lower enrollment? And at the time, Mr. Del Moro and I think Pat McLeod, I think was the interim at that point in time, said, "No, the graduating class is supposed to be like four-fifty or something to that effect." So, the graduation rate was about fifty-one percent, fifty-two percent. And it was worse for African-Americans and Hispanics. So, you can imagine what that number was. And that was a problem, you know? I think we were this close from a state takeover in two thousand and three. We had already been given as a monitor. And the reason why, and I know it sounds a little long, but we need to embrace our failures of the past. We have a new generation of students and parents in our district who don't understand where we came from. And what that leads to is kind of what led to this year when we had only four or five hundred people come out to vote for a school budget in a school election. People forget. They think, "Oh, you're doing well, keep going, blah, blah, blah." It doesn't work that way. One bad move, it took us thirteen years to erase a fifty percent graduation rate to where we're at now. It'll only take one or two bad years to go back to the old way, and then you have to recover all over again. So, the reason why I say this is so people understand where, what our roots are here. And so, the following year, we set out on a superintendent search. And remember, we went out to Oswego and met this gentleman, talked to the mayor, talked to the police department. There were three candidates that it came down to. Actually, two, I think, really. There was a gentleman from New Jersey, but it really, yeah, we had kind of narrowed it down to the gentleman from Texas and Dr. Eastwood at the time. And I said to Dr. Eastwood in an interview, and I've said this story a couple of times, I said, "How can you, how can you really lead a school district that where you're coming from doesn't look like us?" You know, we were almost fifty percent Hispanic, thirty percent black, twenty-some-odd percent white. We were a very diverse school district. And he had, he was the superintendent of a district that was ninety percent white. Right, accurately? And so, his response to me, he goes, "I'm not gonna lie to you. I'm not gonna say that I know what's important to the Hispanic community or what's important to the African-American community, but the one thing that bonds us both is poverty. Whether you're white, whether you're black, whether you're Hispanic, my school in Oswego may have been mostly white, but it was extremely poor." And I think you had poverty, free and reduced lunch, that was in the sixty's or seventy percent up there as well. Very similar to us, and I was intrigued by that. And so, that was a great answer. Pulled me over. And thirteen, you remember that? Before he came here, there were ten superintendents in thirteen years. Ten. Essentially, every school building in this district was running by itself. Had its own philosophies because they figured the next guy who comes or the next gal that comes, they're gonna leave. So, thirteen years later, we've had one superintendent. People say, "Oh, well, he gets paid a lot." Yeah, he gets paid a lot because he's been here for thirteen years. He's now the, we now have the longest-serving superintendent, whereas we couldn't hold one for a year before he came. And the result of that, we couldn't even use our track because it was decrepit in nature by the time, you know, I had taken office at that point. And we have a new facility that injects millions of dollars into the local economy each year with state championships. We had to fight and persevere through Tworley, a school that I went to, and I knew wasn't any good back in the nineteen seventies when I went to it. But we had to fight the community. They didn't want to get rid of that building, a small faction. But we persevered, and now we have, by square footage, the largest elementary school in the state of New York. And people love it. And nobody complains about it anymore. They can't think of their lives without it right now. On any given day, if you go out there tonight, over there in that little track and playground, it's packed. It's become part of our community. So, I am proud of what we've done. Mr. Del Moro. Mr. Tuttle, first of all, you know, congratulations on your first year as our business official because it's not an easy job to do. I'm sure you were scared at some points in times and wondering, "Did I do the right thing?" But you did. And we appreciate all the hard work that you put into it. And I hope that what you came across is that this is a very patient board that will allow you to grow in that position and make it your own. You know, you were filling in big shoes with Ms. McKean, but I'm sure you'll continue to have a very, a very successful term as our business official, and hopefully you stay. Mr. Scott, back there, I didn't forget you. Mr. Scott's been part of our district for how many, how long? Eighteen? Eighteen years. And I don't even have to mention anything. Just go to any one of our buildings. Take a look at the camaraderie with all of our buildings and grounds group, who do an outstanding job in making sure that our buildings, which are, you know, practically used twenty-four-seven nowadays, and how off, how great they do. And Mr. Del Moro, you're thirty years of service?
Thirty years old, yes.
No, you're not thirty years old. Thirty years of service.
Show me your license.
You know, both that, at various different buildings within the district, but, you know, I don't know how he does it without you. And please know that you're greatly appreciated. And I'll give you my own personal side note. If you were, if you wanted to stay on as superintendent long after you leave, say, you know, I think you'd have a lot of support, so, but that's my own diatribe for a later thing. And you, young man. Thank you. I mean, I don't even know how to put into words the amount of, of what you've meant to this district. And I think people will really begin to hurt a year or two after you're gone. That realization of your vision has kept us ahead of anybody in this state. Not this town, not this region, but this state. You took a district in turmoil with no confidence from the public. You faced many challenges, both from the board table and outside the board table, and you just went straight ahead. Whatever happened out here was not gonna affect this school district, how it operated, and what the results have been ever since. I thank you for that. I am very proud of the fact that my two children are here. My son Alex, who graduated on time as a special education student suffering from autism. And my daughter, who will graduate next week, ninth in her class and headed to RIT, you know, look at them. That's because of you. You like to say that, you like to say that it's a result of parenting. And, you know, we do a good, fair share of it. But your, your dogma's always been, if our kids are given the same exact opportunity as somebody out in Long Island or in somebody out in Orange County, California, that they will excel the same way those kids do. And you've given them the opportunities. And then it's their job to take it and run with it. And I think our graduates, every year, you're hearing more and more of them becoming more nationally known because of what they've decided to do. That wasn't the case thirteen years ago. And I want to thank you for that, for my own personal perspective, but as a district as a whole, all right? And then finally, the last three people I gotta thank, my wife and my two kids. I did these fourteen years for you. And you've made me very proud. It would have really sucked that I spent fourteen years for not. You know, behind you is my best man at my wedding, who works for the district, Mr. Kevin, and his daughter's going through it now, and she's experiencing all those items too. But, you know, I'm sorry for the times I wasn't there because I was here. But I want all of you to know that the reason why I was there is because I wanted all the other kids in our district to have the same opportunities that you did. So, thank you for letting me do that. And now I'm done. I hate to do that to you, but you're up, Mr. Pierre.
I'm not gonna try. That was a good, that was very good. Thanks again, thank you, Ed. You and Darryl, we came in together. Well, I came in, Darryl and I came in together, and we were voted in at the same time. And I learned a lot from you in the last three years. You also, Darryl, with your perspective as a, as an educator, I've learned a lot from both of you. And it's been an honor serving with you guys. I really, really appreciate you. And I just want to talk a little bit about some of the events that's been going on in the district in the past few weeks. Obviously, I couldn't make all of them, but I did manage to make a few. Middletown's Young Voices. This was an incredible concert with the Presidential Park, William A. Carter and Maple Hill Choirs on stage together at Twin Towers. I don't know if any of you in here were there. It was awesome. The kids gave, they gave everything, and I really, really enjoyed it. I'm sure that everybody in the audience felt the same way. Next was the Twin Towers Concert Series, the Music Department Concert Series, also at Twin Towers. There were two concerts on Thursday, June eighth. I won on Thursday, June eighth, and the second one on June twelfth. I wasn't able to make the June eighth one, but I did make the June twelfth concert. And that, that one as well was out of the park. I mean, it was, it was incredible. All the kids gave everything they had, and they gave us a beautiful time. It was especially, it was even more special for me because my son, Christian, was involved in every aspect of the concert. He played the guitar, played the violin, he sang with the chorus, played the keyboard, and I was very, very impressed. I had a really, really good time. And I'm very proud of him for what he did over there, and then all the other kids as well, for giving everything they had. I also attended the award ceremony at Twin Towers. I couldn't attend Mon Hagan's award ceremony, but I'm sure everyone there as well, you know, deserved everything they received for their hard work. I congratulate them and I wish them well. There were sixty-three students at Twin Towers that received honors for just about everything you can imagine, from math awards, English, music, high honor roll, honor roll. They were, I mean, out of two-hundred-and-sixty-three students, sixty-three received awards. I think that's incredible. And they need to be commended for their hard work. And of course, I mentioned my son, Christian, again. He was also a high honor roll awards receiver, and I'm very proud of them for that as well. I'm just, I'm just very proud of the work we're doing in this district. And I just wanna thank all the teachers who take part and really help these kids out and give them everything they need to succeed. And I want to also congratulate the graduating class. Wish them a lot of success in the future. All the eighth graders who are going into high school, I wish them also success. And just wish everyone well and have a happy summer. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Pierre. Mrs. Knapp.
Last week, a few of us had the honor of going to the retirement for Sarah Zuton Doyle for Orange County School Boards. And she has been here and involved with us since all of our chaos back in the early two thousands. She retired, we, they had a really nice dinner. Mr. Estrada was honored because he was leaving the board. So, Vince and Rose and I went, and that was very nice to recognize someone who'd been here, how many years? Thirty?
Her service was thirty, but going back to Pine Bush days, forty years, I think.
Yeah. Dealing with children and education. So, that was nice. I also attended the annual track banquet the other night. Over two-hundred-and-thirty people were there. A lot of awards were given. It's one of the bigger programs that we have here in Middletown. So, after we got that stadium, then we went and took off. And that is a really, it benefits Middletown and the students quite a bit. There's so many varieties of things that they can do. I'm just really impressed. Hopefully, we can keep it going. But the vision that Dr. Eastwood had is what has put us where we are today. It was, as Ed says, these things, it's bringing back memories from the two, early two thousands when I got on the board. And I'm like, "Oh, I don't want to remember those anymore." So, that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Knapp. Mr. Tobiasin.
I can only re-echo what all of my fellow board members have said. Certainly, it's an honor to serve on the board. I think the leadership, Ed, this year. And, you know, you said it before, we might not always agree, but we could disagree and we could still leave here with respect for one another. And I think that's, and I think that goes for any of the board members. We might not agree with their decision or the way they voted, but we still have that respect. Certainly, your leadership has been outstanding this year. I certainly empathize with your family for the time and the hours that you have spent away from them. I will say, I always see Alex at Shoprite, and I speak to him, and I get a big smile. So, keep up the good work, Alex. Again, a tribute to this school district. And I know you've said it in the past, and I guess I feel a little uncomfortable of saying it, but, because I don't look at Alex that way. You know, he has some special needs. And yet, we have a local business that saw the excellent qualities in him. I know, apples don't fall far from trees. But, and, and he's been very successful. So, Darryl, you're certainly gonna be missed. I, I just amaze at sometimes at what you point out to us that we just take for granted. And you point out Women's History Month, or you will point out some of the problems with diversity and with recognizing our, the pride community, I'm gonna put it that way. Anyhow, just thank you. Mr. Del Moro, we're always talking, so I do appreciate what you have to say. But Ken, there's, what can we say? This board is what it is because of the leadership sitting around this table here. Mike, I remember the days in Monroe Woodbury, so we just need to...
Was that a threat or something?
I don't know what that was.
Oh, no, Mike was, Mike was a huge loss to Monroe Woodbury. And I, you know, kept saying to him, "There's a job in Middletown, go apply." So...
Thank you, Mr. Tobiasin. Mr. Crescenzo.
Thank you for those kind words, by the way. And I didn't retire for my first term. I was voted out. But... But, you know, looking back on those days, those are, as you said, I'm not going to go over it all in detail, but those were incredibly difficult. Nobody had an idea how hard it was going to be. But I don't remember that. I remember where we were and the hiring of Dr. Eastwood and where we went from there. That, so to me, those five years were very successful for myself personally because of where, what we did. And Ed, I came back because I wanted to enjoy what the district is today. You know, this is, this is hard work, but it's good work. And I got to say, Ed, from the bottom of my heart, you have raised the bar for president of a Board of Education. You're going to be very, very difficult shoes to fill. Very proud of what you did this year. And also, if I can coin a phrase, you're a Ken's kid, because Ken came here thirteen years ago, you were in kindergarten, yes, and you are the fruit of the district's endeavor, and how we got to where we are today. So congratulations, Dr. Eastwood. You've got four-hundred-some-odd kids, Ken's kids.
That's good, because now that you have a kid, I could pass to college tuition. That goes along with it.
And I attended the celebrations for the academies, and just to see those bright faces and where they're going, you know, with the announced, what schools they were going to, what they were going to do, is just so impressive. And the other very impressive thing was the NJ ROTC, Changing of the Guard. The awards they've won this year is just outstanding. But one of the things that I really took away from this was the amount of mutual respect between Commander Wall, his cadets, and cadets, and Commander Wall. He let them express themselves, you know, excitement, what have you, and just the look, they calmed right down. You know, he just had total control in a positive way over that. And where those students are going, the graduates, was incredibly impressive too. Some are going into the service, others are going on to college. And it's just, and some are going into, into the work world. But again, from fourteen years ago, thirteen years ago to now, it's just, I just love this progress. It's just amazing. And unfortunately, I won't be able to attend the graduation this year. A friend of mine, in 2011, passed away from ALS, Lou Gehrig's disease, and his wife actually was a executive secretary here in the district for a while, a number of years. So we found, Dr. Eastwood, and I did this a number of years ago also, I found an organization that raises money through bicycling, and we're going to ride from Boston to Greenwich to raise money for ALS research. And last year, we raised eight-hundred thousand dollars that went directly into an institute in Cambridge, Massachusetts. So at the end of, about noon or two o'clock on Friday, I'll have ridden a hundred and five miles, and I'll be in Storrs, Connecticut, so I won't make it. But my best to the graduation, graduating class. You guys have done an incredible job, and congratulations.
How many miles have you put on so far, though, for ALS?
So two-hundred-and-eighty times, it'll be two-hundred-and-eighty times seven. So that's, what, fifty-six, fourteen, almost three thousand miles.
And I remember, and I drove from Middletown to Greenwich to watch you guys finish the first time.
That's right. And that almost killed us. That was the worst thing, because we weren't ready for it.
Yeah, and Greenwich. It rained too, didn't it, towards the end? That type of, great job.
Last thing, I'm so dedicated to it. There's my bicycle, and it says Tri-State Trek underneath it.
You just wanted to show off your bicycle.
So if you find me on the side of the road, you know what I was doing.
Thank you, Mr. Chisenzo. Pastor Williams.
There's so many, so many exciting things going on in the district right now, so many recognitions and so many different events that are going on, and it's hard for us to get to every last one of them. I was able to go to the Twin Towers concert, as my son was also participating. That's the Thursday night one I went to, and it was a tremendous concert, as always, with our music department in all of our buildings. Tremendous time, tremendous event. We have so many different things, again, recognitions and all of the different things that, invitations that are handed to us here at the board table. And it would be nice if we could go to all of them, but I do want to say congratulations to all of those that are being recognized, to all of the students, all of our graduates, this graduating class, that's, next Friday, will walk the stage and receive their diplomas, and will transition out of this season of their life into the next season of their life. Congratulations to all of them, and congratulations on all their hard work. Congratulations to the teachers and the staff that worked so hard, the administration that worked so hard in getting our students to this place. You talked about, you talked about the adversities of the past, and I remember all of that, everything that was going on during those days. You could not live in Middletown and not know about it. But I've come to find out that adversities make us stronger, and there's a scripture that says, I'm a preacher, so you have to expect that, but there's a scripture that says our trials only come to make us strong. And so you've got to go through some stuff sometimes in order to make yourself better. That's if you allow it to work for you. There's a process that you've got to go through to achieve greatness. Diamonds don't become a diamond until it's been subjected to a necessary amount of pressure. So we are, you know, we've gone through it, and not going to say that we don't have other things that we're going to have to face, but because of the things that we've learned over the last past years, it makes us stronger, wiser, and better to be able to face the things that we have to face in the future to new seasons and new age, and I think that we're in the right, we're in the right direction, moving in the right direction. And it's all because of the vision of our superintendent and our administration. Without vision, people perish. And so the vision has set us in the right pathway, and I think it's a vision that will last a long time. So congratulations to everybody involved there. To our, my, my colleagues, Mr. McElroy, going to miss you. Congratulations on having this time with your family. Extremely knowledgeable, kind man. I can say, I can say that. Just sitting and listening to you talk sometimes in our meetings has made me feel a lot dumber. But, you know, but it's a good dumb. And so I really appreciate you, and I wish you all the best in your endeavors, wish you all the best in, in anything that you put your hands to. I wish you Godspeed and great success at everything that you do. Ed, you have been, you and I, you've said it, we've known each other for probably about thirty-five years now. I remember you as that little skinny Hispanic kid walking around the hallways, underclassmen walking around the hallways. But I want to, I'm grateful for our friendship over the years. And you're one of the prime reasons, one of the main reasons that I decided to go ahead and run for the board some, a few years back, your encouragement. And you have been a source of information, a source of encouragement. You've been an endless source, a resource of help in, in helping me to be able to get past certain parts of the learning curve, and I greatly appreciate that. Your passion, your passion for what you do, as it relates to this board, it shows through. Because when you speak, you might be a banker, but you speak as though you are actually an educator. And, and that's, that's the passion that you've showed in everything that you've done. And it, it, it has encouraged me, it has inspired me, and I'm very grateful. And you've showed that same passion for your family. You have, you said my family was beautiful, but you have a beautiful family. You have a great family, and, and, and this is your, this is your, if you, for lack of anything, this is, this is what your future is. This is your prosperity. Prosperity is not tied up in your finances, is not tied up in your, in the things that you've accomplished and obtained materially, but your prosperity is tied up in your heritage, and you have, you have set the path of a great heritage in your family. And, and I greatly appreciate that, and I see that. You've taken, you've taken the, the arrows out of the quiver, and you've put them in the bow, and you've aimed them, and you've shot them, and they are hitting the mark. Congratulations. Of anything that you have done over these years, that's the thing that you should be the proudest of. And so I appreciate you, my friend, whatever your endeavors are, we're going to, we're going to stay connected anyhow, but whatever your endeavors are, whatever you put your hands to, I pray Godspeed, God's best blessings for you always, heaven's best blessings. Not, not tenfold, not a hundredfold, not a thousandfold, but exceedingly and abundantly above what you can ask or what you can even imagine. That's my wish for you and for Mr. McElroy, and for all of these wonderful colleagues that sit here at the board table with us. We have, we, we don't always agree. We don't always agree, but I, and I said this when we were in the executive session, we don't always agree, but we, we like each other. And, and we have the same goals, and for that, I'm grateful to be able to work with each and every one of you. So here's to the end of a school year and the beginning of a new school year. Here's to a, here's to a, a great future, a great outlook and a great inlook as we process into the next season and the next level of what we have to accomplish in this world. And I think that it's, it's bright, and I'm excited about what's going to happen. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. Mr. Parino, we always save the best for last.
Well, I don't know about that, but I think you were the, you going last, you're the...
I'm done. I did, I don't think they want to hear from me anymore.
You know, I want to congratulate Ed's family for the support, and I want to congratulate Raquel for your work and, and your acceptance into RIT, and I'm sure you'll be right at the top of your class there. And I always say I want to congratulate my guy, what I, as I always call him when I talk to him on the phone. He's a hard worker, he's doing a nice job at working at Shop Right, so keep it up. You know, we have a number of very special people in the audience tonight, and I'm sure they're going to be coming up for one reason or another, but I just want to recognize right now one individual who's leaving the district, resigning and going to Florida. This individual, Catherine Crawford, she is at every event. She's at every event. She does an excellent job, an English teacher at Twin Towers. When I'm there, she's there, and I suppose when I'm not there, she's still there. But no matter if it's in the, the high school, the middle schools, or elementary schools, there she is, helping out and being in attendance. And by gosh, you certainly, I don't miss seeing you at the events, and I, I'm sure that you will be missed by your students and the faculty and the administration. So Florida's gain is our loss. So, thank You know, I have a number of things this evening, but I'm just going to mention a couple, and I'll work it in during the summer because the hours is, is getting late. I, I just want to mention the K's and the 5K and the 10K. And let's start with the 10K. What Ed did not say, he does a, a great job with the announcements at so many events, the, the, on the track, the 10K, and also all the softball games and the football games, on, on, on. So he takes a lot of time doing that. And Mrs. Knapp, she runs a Linda A. Knapp concession stand, and that's her, or you don't want to misbehave when you're working in that concession stand, I'm telling you. She does a great job.
You've got to go at one speed, and if you go slower than that speed, you're going to have footprints on your back.
And she, she does an excellent job. And you know, she's not only in the concession stand, but she, she has to prepare, get all the products in the concession stand. And she gets cooperation from, I'm sure, the, our food service and the two representatives from food service.
Don't forget Joe.
Lainey and Lauren Burr are here tonight, and they're going to have something to say. But getting back to the K's.
Don't forget Joe, though. Mr. Knapp. With the grill, Mr. Knapp.
Mr. Knapp. He's cooking hamburgers in there, yeah, Joe Knapp. Great job. But, you know, I just want to compliment all our custodial staff who not only do a good job throughout the year custodian buildings and grounds, but I want to compliment them for giving up their time volunteering at the 10K. It was all volunteer work, and some spent four-plus hours there from early in the morning into the afternoon. So I'm going to read their names, and thank you for doing that. Mark Woodruff, Skip Andrews, Julio Rodriguez, Maria Blanco, Paul Norton, who's the district head custodian, Lydell Henderson from Presidential here, Colleen Taylor, Bill Kilcoyne. Colleen is, he just does an excellent job on the field. He's in charge of the fields. Bill Kilcoyne, Bob Nowicki, Gary Wyman, Mark Henderson, Mike Fitzgerald, and George Purna. So we really appreciated that work. Concluding the 5K, what can you say? It's the twenty-first year, the Ruthie Dano Marshall 5K race, not necessarily our, completely our program, it's a YMCA program, but Ruthie, Ruth Dean, and George Marshall, they're instrumental in planning this program. And at this, at this race, let me tell you, the jazz band was there, Twin Towers Jazz Band, and they did a tremendous job. And most of the, in fact, all the music teachers from Twin Towers were there. So I just want to congratulate Alagra Smith, Kathy Lucas, Amanda Mita, and from Carter was Sandy Bookie. He's always, he's always helping at various events. And the other person there in the jazz man, Amanda Keppon, I believe. I don't really, I don't, okay, thank you, Kathy. Kepp, Keppra, okay, thank you. So again, nice job in that 5K. So good, Ed. I'm going to save the rest of the items, because we've been here, it's getting late. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parino. Moving on to our first opportunity to address the board. It's the public's ability to give the Board of Education all of their concerns. You have four minutes. Mr. Pierre will keep time. He's at the end of the table. We'll give you a one-minute queue, a thirty-second queue. And time's up just means if you can start to wrap things up, in order to give you an opportunity. The board does not dialogue with the public. It's our opportunity just to sit back and to listen to what our community has to say. So if anybody at this time would like to go up and address the board, you are more than free. I see a bunch of newcomers to the microphone.
This is my first time. Good evening, President Estrada.
I thought you weren't supposed to address us.
Okay, you better stop. All right, good evening. As you all already know, my name is Lisa Estrada, and as our daughter Raquel prepares to walk across the graduation stage, I want to first and foremost thank all of the teaching staff, paraprofessionals, administration, all the way down to whomever is employed by this district, because without them, my son and my daughter would not be who they are today and would not be as successful as they are today. And I've never, in all the years they've been in this district, had a chance to do that. And from the bottom of my heart, thank you very, very much. This evening, my husband Edwin Estrada ends his fourteen-year service to this wonderful educational community. I recall all those years ago when this district was in absolute turmoil. We all recall the reasons why. We don't have to revisit those. It was at that time that Edwin decided to attend his first-ever board meeting and have his voice heard. He then attended a second, and then a third. And it was after, I believe, this third meeting that he came home at around 1:00 AM, woke me up, and said he was going to take a stand and quote, "put his money where his mouth is," and he was going to run for a seat on the Board of Education. Being half asleep, I didn't take him seriously, but then he started to order signs. So then I had to take him seriously. So I realized that, as we are both very proud graduates of the class of 1984 Middletown High School... High School, he realized, and I also realized, changes had to be made if he was going to be able to say that his children could attend this district and succeed. With the exception of Mr. Perrino, my husband is the epitome of Mitty pride. No one can take that name other than you, Mr. Perrino, but he's a close second. From the very day that my husband took the oath of office for this board during his first term, he has made good on his promise to make a difference, not only for his own children, but for every child in this community. From announcing the girls varsity basketball games, the girls varsity softball games, Middletown Football, Section 9 Lacrosse and Soccer Championships, the 10K and 5K Classics, to serving on numerous committees and being an active member of this, of the Orange County School Board, he made that difference that he strove and promised that he would. Although I will certainly miss those Thursday nights when I'm able to have control of the remote. I'm also very happy that he's going to be home on those Thursday nights. This district will miss you and I want to say from the bottom of my heart, I thank you and our children thank you. Thank you for being such an amazing father, husband, and we love you and are very proud of you. And to Dr. Eastwood, for your continued passion, vision and dedication to this district that we call Middletown, I thank you. I know I speak for Edwin as well as myself and for our children, they are who they are today, partly because of the education that they have been blessed to have received through this school district. I thank you very much. And to all those prospective board members and past and present board members, I thank you as well. This is a thankless job and takes a very special person to serve on a Board of Education, no matter what district you're in. And again, I thank you. And one last congratulations to the class of 2017. I've grown up, or I've seen them all grow up from kindergarten until now, some even before, and congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, my love.
Talking to him?
Yeah, I'm talking to Kevin.
Thank you, thank you, yeah, a little bit, right? No, thank you very much. I will be brief because it has been long and I didn't want to pass on the opportunity though. Mr. McElroy and Mr. Estrada, thank you so much for your service. You know, I came in here not as an employee, but I was a parent with a daughter who was getting ready to go into kindergarten and all we saw was what we saw on television and we're like, what are we getting into here? And what we tried to do was just listen to everybody involved and draw our own opinion on their opinions. And you know, Mr. Perrino, Mrs. Tobiasin and Mrs. Knapp were a big part of all of that. And Mr. Estrada, you know, you all gave people the opportunity to get your take on what was happening and you gave us the opportunity to make our opinion and have an opinion on which way we wanted this district to go. I don't know if that makes sense or not. And Mr. McElroy, before you even sat there, for years you were somebody who came up and helped push a cause forward that bettered this district. And I can tell you as someone, also as an employee, there were lots of opportunities where things could have possibly gone wrong and you never know which way, if votes had gone certain ways, that we would not have the opportunities and that my child, who's now going into eighth grade, has the opportunities to be a part of in this district because of the work that both of you did and believed and got other people to believe in what was going on. So, I mean, there are things happening now that my daughter isn't going to be around or is already behind her, the bilingual classes, the mastery program. And the thing that I talk to people about is the two-year kindergarten. I mean, that's a tremendous idea and all of that, in my opinion, is just things that have been built on and built on and built on and the administration doing a great job. So, but congratulations on your service and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. Would anybody else like to address the board at this time? No. I'd ask the phone. It's okay. Yeah, because we had enough in graduation next week, but thank you, John. Now we're actually going to do some business. You know, I look at Mr. Johansson, he's probably going, what the heck? Is this how a normal Board of Education? It's not. Traditionally, we'd get some business done, a lot more business done. At this moment, we'd like to move on to our personnel, no letters, right, Mrs. Clark? Personnel action items. Does anybody have any problems doing them all together?
No.
You good with that?
Yep.
Doing them together? Okay, so at this moment in time, I need approval for Personnel Memorandum 25A Administrative, 25B Instructional and 25C Non-Instructional.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perrino, seconded by Pastor Williams. Any discussion? Huh? Oh, I didn't have it on the original, but 25D as well, thank you. Moved by Mr. Perrino, seconded by Pastor Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries eight, zero. Mr. Delmore.
Can we just go back a second? Did we approve the minutes? I know the meeting's been long.
Yes, we did.
We did approve the minutes? Okay, no problem, didn't have it for us.
Yep.
Thank you.
That one I did do, eight, nothing. Mr. Delmore, we have introduction of personnel.
Yes, we do. Although there's been noted on the agenda this evening, several appointments for administrative and instructional and non-instructional, we do have two people that have just been welcomed into our school district. And I'd like to begin with the administrative position that's there at Maple Hill. So I'd like to ask Mrs. Creedon and Mrs. Driscoll, who's been appointed this evening, as long as Mr. Kelly's here as well, come up to the microphone and recognize our new administrator, Assistant Principal at Maple Hill Elementary School.
Dr. Eastwood, it has been a tremendous year at Maple Hill and Mr. Kelly and I were so excited to take on an intern this year in Mrs. Driscoll. She dove right in and really helped start off the school year with tremendous excitement. Her energy, enthusiasm, meticulous planning, attention to detail and really calm manner are a wonderful balance to our team. She brings much thought and conversation to the table and it is with a lot of pride and excitement that we welcome her officially to the team as our new Assistant Principal.
I'd just like to take the opportunity to very briefly thank all of you for the wonderful opportunities I've been provided with since I joined the Middletown School District. This is not the first and I hope it won't be the last, so thank you so much for your faith. I'm so grateful for the opportunity to serve the community. I would also just like to take a moment to thank Amy and Matt. It's been an incredible, incredible experience. I've learned so much and just incredible mentorship by Amy and I just can't speak highly enough of my experience there, so thank you, thank you. Thank you.
And as we have marching middies as a focus, we continue that tradition with the newest instrumental music teacher to head that group. And I'd like to ask Mrs. Sorrentino, along with Mr. Connell, come up and introduce to the public our new one, Mr. Johansson.
Thank you, Mr. Delmore. Good evening, Dr. Eastwood, President Estrada, members of the board. It gives me great pleasure to introduce, kind of second time, thanks Ed, way to go, to introduce Mr. Guy Johansson. He will be our bandleader for the coming school year. He joins us from a little university called Syracuse University upstate and he will also be working with our marching band and our marching band staff to bring us into a new era. Welcome, Mr. Johansson.
I just want to thank you all so much for this opportunity. I'm very excited to be able to engage with the community, to make a better, bigger impact of the music program and through the music program. I'm really hoping to get a lot of students interested in music and making music to represent themselves, represent their community and really make a big impact on the school and everything around them. So thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
I also do want to note and I want to thank the services of Dr. Adam Shigeris. With the approval of this evening's Personnel Memorandums, we accepted his resignation from his position as Dean of Students. Adam did an outstanding job over at the high school, he'll be sorely missed. I spoke to him after one of the events last week and he kind of felt bad, you know, he really loves the district, but who can argue when you get a job that's five minutes from your house and when you have two little ones, you know, that's very important. So we definitely understand his position as well and he'll be sorely missed over at the high school. Yep, and then Katie's here as well, who we talked about. Did you want to come up and say anything or? Because we are eternally grateful for what you've provided for our district and we want to make sure that doesn't go unnoticed, for sure.
I really appreciate that. I started here in 2005 from a small Christian school, I taught in New Jersey. Both of my children graduated from Middletown High School and my youngest is a student here at Presidential and she would have been going into third grade. And I regret pulling her out so early because of all the wonderful things. I mean, this truly is a community. I see a lot of people outside of the school. My son had a stroke when he was 19, Mrs. Knapp was his nurse, you know, so it was good to have those types of connections because I was very nervous, of course, and she put me at ease right away, you know. I see Mr. Perrino all the time out, Dr. Eastwood, you know, everybody. I just, this was the best district I've ever worked in. I'm not leaving because it was negative, I am leaving because an opportunity arose in Florida. But I will miss this school, I will miss Twin Towers, I will miss Mr. Dean, all the staff, everybody. It's just been an incredible experience. I'm grateful for everything that I learned. I'm still in professional development after 21 years of teaching. I just finished my last professional development class tonight, as a matter of fact, learning a lot of new and exciting things in education and that was all provided by the Middletown School District, so I do appreciate that. And I appreciate being recognized because I was telling Mrs. Sorrentino when I walked in, I said, I guess my mother gave me that sense of, you know, you have to do for your community, you need to be a part of your community. You can't make it better if you're not a part of it. And so I do live here, I shop here, my children go to school here, I am employed here, I go to church here, so it's, I feel it's my duty to be present, to make it a better community for not just my child, but for all of the children that live here in Middletown. So that's why I do try to go to out a lot. But I do want to thank you, I don't want to take up any more of your time. I appreciate the recognition, I didn't do it for the recognition, but this will be my home, my forever home. So, thank you again.
Well, thank you for your service, for sure. Superintendent's report, Dr. Eastwood.
Sure. I have a couple of things I'd like to go over and announce at the same time, but given all the comments that have gone on, it would be remiss of me to not put things into perspective and although a lot of people have pointed to me relative to vision in those types of things and moving the district forward, I want to remind everybody that things don't happen without the implementers. The administration, the teachers, our support staff, they're the ones who I refer to as the implementers that put all these things into motion and make everything work and all of the progress possible. Those are the people that make it happen and we have to remember that as we take a look at the 13 years and it has been drastically changed and drastically improved for our kids and that's really the focus, it's all about the kids. But it's also important to remember that it's the implementers who really get the work done and make all of that happen. So I just, I want to put that into perspective. The other thing is, we have a very, I think, wonderful announcement tonight, talking about focusing on our kids. We've been working very hard, our new director and assistant director of Food Service have been working diligently with Mike. And tonight, we want to announce that there is not going to be any, any what has been called food shaming in our school district. And food shaming, if you don't know, is oftentimes where students who don't have the money to purchase a lunch have their lunches removed for them and are given something else because they can't afford or they fail to bring money in order to eat. We have a very large number of students, 76% of our population, who come to us understanding that we probably provide their main sources of food. And we also understand that there are other situations of students that may not be in that category that also need some type of assistance in making sure that they eat and eat well as well. Because if they can't eat, if they're not nourished, education is difficult. So today, I want to have them come up, but the purpose of today's meeting is to announce the fact that next school year, we will have 100% free lunch. None of our kids will be without a lunch and they will not have to pay for a lunch. And that's as a result of the work of our new director, assistant director, and Michael in putting these programs together, making sure that we've met the percentages that are required by the state and federal government to be able to do that. So I'm going to have them come up, but in addition to this, one of the things that, programs that we're looking forward to is starting next year, not only 100% free and reduced for our kids and allowing them to be nourished in this district, both through breakfast and lunch, but we're now looking at feeding some of the teams after school, providing a light dinner for students because we would like to also keep the high school open until 8 o'clock, Monday through Thursday, so they have a place to come to, to study, to get some extra help from our kids. So when we open the renovations, we plan on also bringing forward to the Board of Education, keeping that building and those spaces open at night, so our kids have the opportunity to come here, study and also get a third meal if necessary. So I don't want to take the wind out of your sails, but I want to make sure that there's an emphasis on how important this program is. So Mike, you want to introduce them?
Thank you, Dr. Eastwood. Tonight, we're very excited, as Dr. Eastwood said, to announce a great new nutrition program for the community. It's really been a great experience for me to get to learn and know Debbie as our new director and her nutritionist, Lauren. Usually I call them the three o'clock group because they're coming over to the board office for a quick meeting with me every day at 3:00. But tonight, they're going to introduce some very well-deserved effort on their part and we're going to be able to serve breakfast and lunch to all our students, as Dr. Eastwood mentioned, and then also looking at dinners as well for the high school students. So without further ado, I'll let them take it away and introduce the program. Thank you.
Can you, there I am. Thank you, thank for having us. Again, Lauren and I are very happy to be here and we have some exciting news. Again, Lauren and I are, are very happy to be here, and we have some exciting news. So, there it is. We're going to be able to offer breakfast and lunch to all students in attendance at no cost to them. So, how does that happen?
So, what we looked into is called CEP, or Community Eligibility Provision. And what that does is it allows certified schools to provide breakfast and lunch for free to all students. So, as stated before, this was a great goal for our department, and this is how we're making it happen.
So, why CEP in, in Large City School District of Middletown? The numbers work for us. USDA did a study, and all schools that qualified, that participated in the study were CEP schools, and they saw an increase in lunch participation of 13% and 25% increase in the breakfast participation.
Here we have slides of meal service from September to April, and that takes into consideration that 25% increase on the right-hand side that CEP would provide, as stated in the pilot.
So, what does that mean for us in operation? In operation, that means that we have, we will need to provide 60,000 additional breakfasts in the school term, which equals about 342 meals a day, district-wide.
And below, we have the chart, same information, but for our lunch statistic, and taking into consideration that 13% projected increase from CEP.
Operationally, that means that we'll have an increase of 84,000 lunches, about 479 lunches a, a day. So, there it is, the big question.
So, we have meal equality.
Projected at no additional cost.
Food variety.
Projected at no additional cost.
Nutritional standards.
Projected at no additional cost.
Increased academic performance.
Projected at no additional cost. So, the future for our department is very exciting. Short-term, we'll hopefully have our CEP, I'll say this right, implementation, September 1. I've been messing up that word all day.
So, our summer food service program, we have a good expansion going on with that. For those of you who don't know, what it is, is we provide free meals at parks and other locations during the summer to children under 18. So, our summer feeding program has expanded, like I said, and we're adding new sites. We have about an increase of 200 lunches daily. We also are getting into some technology use in the department. So, we're expanding our use of technology and web-based programming. And specifically, we're going to be starting to implement a web-based menu planner. So, this is really awesome, because it allows for students, or parents, anybody, to access our menus and nutritional information online.
And live.
And live, yes.
We also are going to investigate a little further into some, increasing our after-the-school day meal options, which would include after-school snacks and possibly the dinner meal, and we're going to have some new equipment in our middle schools. So, if anybody has any questions, or any such things?
We'll go around the table. I will say one comment before we go around the table. I just said to Dr. Eastwood, I said, "This falls into one of those categories of, is this too good to be true?" type of thing. And he's like, "No, we actually were on a conference call with State Ed to make sure that we were on, on the thing." So, we'll start over on this side this time, Pastor Williams.
I'm, I'm kind of, I'm still, I'm in awe, because I think, I think this is absolutely wonderful, and much-needed. The stories, the stories that I, the stories that I get, and I don't say a lot, but the stories that I get about food shaming and different things like that, that you were just talking about, Dr. Eastwood, sometimes, sometimes, I don't know how to defend it. So, I try to, I keep myself, try to keep myself out of that mix. But this is absolutely wonderful, and I think it's great. And, and, and the future, I love what, I love what you put up, what the vision for the future is, and, and where we're going to go with this, and the increase of school-day meal options, after-school-day meal options, absolut, absolutely fabulous. So, the only other thing I want to know is how many times you guys practice your presentation?
All afternoon?
Because you flowed, you flowed, it was, it was like, I thought, I thought we were on an episode, episode of Shark Tank. But you did, you did excellent job. Thank, thank you.
Mr. Cassenzel.
Where does the money come from? Can you give us like an estimate dollar amount? And is this a renewable program? It does have to be renewed every year? Is it ongoing? Is there a chance of it stopping at some time, or?
Well, the good news is that it, when we apply, I, you get certified for five years. The last year's a recertification year, in which we'll have to spend, say, 12-hour days searching for children in our, in our database. So, it's renewable in year five, and we just got notification of a grant that's available to help us implement some of the processes to execute. We do have a little, I'll hand them out, cheat sheet, I guess we can call it, that just demonstrates where, where does the money come from? The money comes from more participation, being able to receive additional reimbursement dollars. So, the top page, the white...
It went to go to the mic. So, the people in the audience are watching, 15 people.
We didn't, we didn't practice, practice that part, so we'll, we'll do better next time. The white sheet shows us statistically where we are right now, if we were to apply with no additional participation. The green sheet, the go-sheet, is where we'll sit with the 13 and 25 projected increase in participation. Now, in March, we did a pilot during the National Breakfast Week, and we had a 61% increase in participation in our breakfast program. So, we think this is, is very attainable for us to get there. What was the other question? There was three questions, right?
Yeah, they, on the, so, where it says optional comparison, the lower right-hand corner, says lunch 279,000, so on. What are the numbers below that, in, in the dark? What's, what?
Well, they're, they're red and, they're red and green. That's why they're dark like that.
No, I mean, yeah.
He just wants to know why it says lunch difference and breakfast difference and negative numbers.
What does it represent?
What those numbers represent is the federal reimbursement dollars that help cover the lost revenue from the paid students.
So, in other words, if we had no increase in the participation rate now, these would be our numbers on the white sheet, this loss. So, what she's saying is we need to increase participation, the more participation, the more revenue we receive based on meals served. So, when we go to the green sheet, we're looking to increase participation for breakfast and lunch, and then we're in the positive, as you can see there.
By serving more meals, okay, even though they're free, our numbers go up significantly. You've done that in the breakfast program and a few other places, so we've tested it out enough to know that it will actually work. So, as the numbers rise, because now you're making it free for all students, because those numbers rise, we qualify for additional aid.
But what would make the numbers not rise? Students not wanting the lunch, or?
Correct. They, they don't participate, they bring their lunches.
They don't come into school early enough to eat breakfast?
Yeah, so, all you have to do is really come to where they, they tested it out, or where we have an opportunity for the kids to eat, like a breakfast especially, they show up in droves. Because they want to eat.
Right, absolutely.
So, this way, what ends up happening is, by, by making it free for everyone, the participation goes up, so we end up getting more money to offset the expenses.
That's amazing.
You get reimbursed for every meal. So, for every meal you hand out, you get a dollar amount.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Mr. Beiser.
No question, but just congratulations.
This is so, so needed in, in this area, and I applaud you for the summer program, because I did have some trepidations whether that would be able to be carried out this year, because I think in the past, with elementary summer schools and, and the other summer school programs, you were a viable source there, so.
We added the sports department at the high school. So, we, we added additional service points. We'll have the high school and the Linda A. Knapp concession stand.
Now, Linda needs some things, wait a minute, you need some things for that concession stand, remember?
Linda, you can go down and get a free meal.
I might have one laying around somewhere.
See that? Mr. McElroy.
Yeah, I also want to commend you both for working very hard on, on this program. I think it's a tremendous thing for the students of our district and the families of our district. Food insecurity is a very big problem that a lot of people face, and it's not just children who unfortunately get shamed, but adults, you know, who are eligible to use SNAP benefits and WIC benefits, and, you know, there's a lot of commentary out in social media about how, you know, people are getting away with murder by using these things. And what people don't understand is that without those benefits, a lot of people would go hungry, many of whom are children, or elderly and unable to work. And it's frankly a shame that people shame people who are eligible for these benefits and then use them. Of course, there are always folks who may, you know, not be doing things appropriately, but that doesn't mean we should punish the vast majority of people who, who really need these things. And by the way, are also working, which is another sad commentary on our state of affairs, where so many people are working so hard and make so little that they kind of even afford to put food on the table.
Two jobs sometimes.
But that's not a problem that we can necessarily solve here entirely, but, you know, this is certainly a step in the right direction. My only concern is, do we, is this, is this grant money, or, or is this five-year commitment kind of guaranteed? Because my concern is with the change in administration in Washington, that there could be cuts to food, or not food, to the school lunch program.
Correct. It's a certified for five years. It's, it becomes untouchable like other legislation that is in effect until time runs out. So, there are at least four meetings a year through Slack, where my, not me personally, but our groups go up there and fight and argue, and hopefully continue to win the battle to keep the money in, in the school lunch program.
Okay, good. Well, that's good to hear, and, you know, we'll certainly do whatever advocacy that we have to do. So, I don't know how we can balance the budget on, on the backs of children, but that's unfortunately a reality. But thank you again.
You're welcome.
Great job. I think that's such a wonderful thing for our district and our kids.
Same, same thing. I think it's, it's a big deal. It's awesome. I remember a few, a few months ago, there was a woman here, I think Ms. Dunkinson, she told her story about what happened with her son. Her son's lunch got mixed up with another child's, and that caused some embarrassment, and I, this won't happen again, so it's a very good idea. Thank you for your hard work.
Oh, you're very welcome. It's our pleasure, an honor.
Mr. Pierre. Mr. Perino.
Great, great idea, great program. Thank you for all the hard work on the program. Now, our lunch program's self-supporting. Am I correct on that?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you anticipate, because of the change in administration in Washington, any change in the reimbursement, either up or down? Have, have you had any notification of that?
The only notification that we've gotten at this point is that there's a slight change in the whole grain, and... The whole, the whole grain. Yeah, just the whole grain that has any effect to the children. But there's been no discussion about taking monies away, and traditionally, the reimbursement rate goes up.
And the, the other question I have, in the lunch program, how much, do you have much food left over at the end of the day?
You're asking me how much food do we have left over that, that we didn't serve, that we prepared and didn't serve?
Well, I always worry about food being left over and having to be thrown away, and I know there's regulations, and I've asked about this before. For example, the Lions Club has a No Kid Hungry Program, which they help feed some of our students on the weekend. And the question I've always had is, why can't some of the food work with the Lions people? Galenis Foglia coordinates us. Why can't some of that food be directed toward that program? But I, I guess, and maybe you can recheck this, I guess there's laws that prohibit this. Am I correct on that?
There's, there's many things to consider, and the, the one thing to, to remember is that you have a very qualified staffing in each of our kitchens, and based on past practice, they know how much food to produce. So, they're, they don't overproduce, and therefore have, have a lot of waste, which helps us on a bottom-line budget. But there is, again, a lot of things to consider, asset rules, and storage, and facilities, and, and there's, it's very regulated.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Yeah, Dr. Eastwood is, is confirming the fact that there's not a lot of prepared wasted food.
Yeah, okay.
And then, you know, they can't control what kids throw out, but at that point, you can't really save that food, for the most part. I have two questions. One, do you know of any other, if any of the other, like, small-city school districts like Newburgh, or Poughkeepsie, or if they're taking part in this program too?
They, they actually are. Lauren and I are on schedule to visit with Caitlin Mazorski from Newburgh, who is, is there a problem with them? Did you, can, can you hear me?
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't hear you. Now you can.
Can you hear me pick it up? Where do we go? Is that better?
Yeah.
Better? All right. Caitlin Mazorski was the school lunch director out of Newburgh. She went partial school district last year, and this year, she's 100% district-wide CEP. And Caitlin has invited Lauren and I to come on next Monday to observe her elementary breakfast service. She has some incredible ideas on how to fix the concerns and worries that come in from other stakeholders, and she, she's one of the ones who forwarded me the grant application.
That's good to know.
And you're, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt, but you're stretching that idea and concept of free for 100, all of our kids to eat breakfast and lunch, because you're also going to make that goal of taking care of kids, and, and as you said, sports athletes for light meals in the evening, so they can go and utilize the facilities to study and continue their work. So, that's a big one. Just remember, this is what we talk about where we have, it's the implementers, you know, Mike and these two ladies, they love challenges, right? Yeah, there you go.
Sure we do.
Have you already done coordination with, with Mr. Coats and the athletic department about how to manage all of that, so to speak, for the athletes?
We've had some preliminary conversations. Right now, we're doing, like I said, we have him involved in our summer feeding program. So, we'll have a great amount of time to get to know each other, and how we can get all that on, on board to work.
And then, my final question was, you know, a lot of parents use the portal to not only find out how much they have left in their account, and they have to replenish and stuff like that, but also what their child's been eating. So, now that they don't have to find out how much money they have in their account, where the portal continues as is, where they can get the information on what their child's doing as far as food's concerned?
There'll be minimal impact to, to the lunch process, but breakfast, to be able to feed all of those children at the same time, we do have to come up with some collaborative ideas on how to get all of the students available. So, we will lose some of that data for breakfast.
Ms. Tobiasin.
Do have a question. Children that have special dietary needs, how do we address those?
That's one of the biggest questions we have for Caitlin over at Newburgh. She, like Lauren, is a nutritionist and has a keen eye for being creative with other things like hummus and whatnot to address. What Caitlin does is she has a special bag, they're color-coded. And the classrooms that need those color-codes, that's the ones they pick up. So there's a meal in that bag assigned to classroom 302, who has a peanut allergy, so that they don't have anything with peanuts in there.
Gluten-free dairy? Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Knapp. You had a question?
I just really had a statement, other than my awesome comment. I think it's going to be, it's really gonna-
Do you need a freezer or something?
Yeah, I need a freezer. It's really going to be an advantage, though, because a lot of those students come to sports after school and they're already hungry because they ate at 11 o'clock.
Correct.
You know? And that affects the, how their, how their outcome is for the practice.
Correct.
And then they, they're all, they go home exhausted because they haven't had any fuel.
Correct.
Or anything. And what they usually do is hit with a soda, you know? So I think-
Or they have to play in Kingston and take an hour bus trip.
Yeah. So I, I think that awesome times too, I guess. I think it's a great idea.
Ladies, thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Perino's got a-
Could you please plan to come back and speak to us and give us an update on the program? Maybe after the first couple of months of the program, see how the program's going.
Oh, absolutely. It'd be our pleasure. Well, absolutely. But not Christmas, though. When, we probably need probably four, four months to get a real measure of how, how it works and-
That'd be a great idea because then you can talk about the evening program and then the snack programs.
So maybe, maybe after, maybe after the first of the year, we'll have Mrs. Clark put it on the tickler calendar for next year to remind our board leadership, whoever that may be, to-
Do you think if we have 5:00 meetings, that maybe we get some?
Maybe, who knows? I'm not going to be here, so. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're very welcome.
And thank you for waiting for us. Moving on to our action items. I need approval for Financial Memorandum Number 26. Moved by Ms. Tobiasin, seconded by Mrs. Knapp. Before we get to discussion, I'm going to have Mr. Tuttle give you an update as some of the items were deleted, I think, from our original financial memorandums. They're back on there. All right, so then no changes. So any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for Special Services Memorandum Number 24.
So moved.
Moved by Pastor Williams, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval of a one-year extension to the existing contract for the superintendent. Moved by Mrs. Tobiasin, seconded by Mrs. Knapp. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Congratulations, Dr. Eastwood, on the contract extension. I need a resolution authorizing the sharing of appraisal costs with the town of Walk Hill.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mrs. Knapp. Any discussion?
Yes, I just want to say that the Audit Committee met this past week. And this resolution has to do with an appraisal for the purpose of a town of Walk Hill piece of property and a reduction in assessment. And this is one of our concerns that we did talk about, the tax surgeries in the Audit Committee. So it certainly has my approval that we engage in an appraisal.
And it's good to see the mutual cooperation between the town and-
One of the, I don't want to, you know, be too sidetracked, but, you know, there is a concern. I mean, we've got Gander Mount now going out. We've got Sears have closed. You know, what does that do to our tax base? What does it, what does it do to our pilots? So we address some of those concerns.
I, I think it would be prudent for whomever the representatives are with the town of Walk Hill next year to keep an open dialogue about what's going on with the Galleria and the replacement. I mean, I think, my understanding is that they have grand visions on transforming the mall. I don't know what those are, but it'd be prudent for the board to take an early look at that next year.
Yeah, because one of my concerns is, we read some of the recent articles, business articles, you know, there's a decrease in mall shopping. So, you know, all of that has to play in. But certainly, this is a great initiative.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need a motion for the refunding of our bonds.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. Crescenzo, I think I heard over there. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero. Moving on to our vast audience and their second opportunity to address the board. Seeing none, we will move on. I need a motion, we have policies, correct? We have, the board was sent out the policies to look at as far as the ones we're voting on. Those were the extra policies, plus a couple of extra that we had submitted to, to get fixed that Mr. McElroy had some suggestions on and they were implemented into them. So I need a motion to approve the policy, to waive the first and second reading of the policies and approve them. Moved by Mrs. Knapp, seconded by Mr. Crescenzo. How many would that leave us to go into the next year? There's one.
Wow, you almost did it.
Almost did it.
He's a comeback.
We'll have to leave it for the next Policy Committee, which was chaired by the Board President. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Now, now I need the actual approval of the policies. That was just the way of the first and second reading. I need a motion. Moved by Ms. Tobiasin, seconded by Pastor Williams. Any discussion?
I don't know if this is out of order technically or not, but on 6120, I was wondering if we could still add something that I had wanted added. But I don't know if the lawyer said-
I thought we added it. Wasn't that, wasn't 6120 one of the two that I withheld from the last committee to send back? For, yeah, we included your suggestion. Because that's why we tabled it. There were two that you made suggestions to.
Yeah.
Both I pulled from the last meeting and now they're being resubmitted with the changes that you suggested. It should have been.
All right, because the, the one that I'm reading-
One was on E-SIGs.
Yeah, the E-SIG one seemed updated to include like the vaping.
And then the other one, we wanted to include language on, was it transgender what we're going to add language to?
Yeah, like in the, in the sentence where it says, and this is on equal employment opportunity and discrimination. And where it says further, the district does not discriminate on the basis of religion or creed, sexual orientation. Wanted to stick in there or, like, comma, I guess is already there, gender identity or expression, and then continue the rest of the sentence, you know, as, as is.
We sent that to the attorneys and they made some adjustments to try to clean some of that up, so.
But where, where, where does it note on the cleaning of the adjustment where it includes gender identity and expression?
It doesn't say it specifically. It talks, you have the-
Because I don't have it right.
The, some of the red language is, like, the rest of the sentence reads military status, genetic status, marital, and then redlined or familial status, domestic violence victim status, criminal arrest or conviction record, and then redlined on the basis of an individual, on an individual's relationship or association with a member of a protected class or any other, but I don't know that that necessarily would include that because technically, they're not a protected class.
Yeah, I agree with you on that. So do we want to pull it?
I don't think we should pull it. I think we should-
We can always amend it. Approve it and then amend it. Are you okay with that?
I, I guess. I'm not going to be here.
Because I'm concerned about if we put it in without them. If there's a reason why they didn't include it the way we had submitted it, they need to explain to us why. You get what I mean? I don't want to just put it in there because there might be a legal reason for some strange reason. I can't foresee one, but-
Can, can I propose this then, I think as a middle ground? We have a special meeting next Tuesday. Can we get an answer by then and then vote on it then, one way or the other?
Okay, so why don't we do that? So we'll pull it tonight.
Because the way I see it, like, I can understand where there might be some trepidation, but I don't see the harm in doing more than what the law requires.
Yeah. Can you do me a favor? Or, I actually submitted it last time with the recommendation, right? With the language? So they have the recommendation. So if, if during the next couple of days before Tuesday, we can clarify on why they did not use that language. And then we can discuss it at Tuesday's meeting. Does that sound good for everybody?
Perfect.
All right, so.
All right, thank you.
So did we do a first and second on that?
Yes.
All right, so I need Ms. Tobiasin and Pastor Williams to rescind their motions.
Rescinded.
Okay, so the motions have been rescinded. And now I need an approval of policies recommended by the Erie One Audit amended to not include Policy 6120, as that will be tabled. So moved by Ms. Tobiasin, seconded by Pastor Williams. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Okay. Wanted to make sure to make it official. That's, that's, yeah, that's it for our, no, now we got to go to audit. Ms. Tobiasin, it's all yours.
Thank you very much. The Audit Committee met on Monday, June 12. And what you had in your packets was the minutes from our April 25, 2017 meeting. I need a motion to accept those minutes. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Lou. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, we also reviewed and approved the weekly claim reports for April 24, May 1, May 8, May 15, May 22, May 29, and June 5. So I need a motion to accept our approval of both the weekly claims as well as the treasures report.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I do want to say that we had some lengthy discussions on, we had our auditors in. And if anyone knows Greg, we had many discussions. He gave us a three-page report of looking at his audit. Here's a good job for you next year, Mr. Estrada. You can serve on the Audit Committee.
Hey, there you go.
Yeah. Well, I'll give you the meeting dates. The very, we don't meet-
Four times.
Yeah, that's, no, I think it's five. Is it four, four or five? But anyhow, we, we did have a really good discussion at that meeting. One of the things we talked about was the tax surgeries, some of the reserve funds and how they're allocated and that. I know Dr. Eastwood stopped in once in a while. And we talked about the Gatsby and what to expect with the June 30, 2017 versus the June 30, 2018. Mr. Estrada, the meetings for next year, we're going to meet at 4:45. The first one is on September 28. The second one is October 26. The third one is January 25.
You're going to have to call the Estrada residence and get permission for the Grand Pooh Bar.
And the last one is June 14. Mr. Estrada, you know our meeting is run very efficiently, less than an hour. So we look forward to having you on our committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tobiasin, for that in-depth report. That handles all the committee report stuff, correct? All right, the only thing for roundtable that I have is I gave everybody a copy of the 2016-17 committee assignments. If you can take that home with you and, and start to think about which committees, which committees. I could think of a couple of good committees for Mr. McElroy to join. But if you guys can take a look at them and start to think about what committee assignments you may want to change to or if you want to remain the same. And I would suggest that you email your top three committees in order of preference to Mrs. Clark before your next school board meeting. And that can be given to the board leadership that takes place on our next meeting. Sound fair?
Yeah, but I wondered if we need that spare funding? Because that didn't meet the GEAR-
No, it didn't. I would drop that. I mean, we'll leave it in case you get something, we'll leave it on the list, but nobody has to put it on there as one of their, you can always fill it in later. So that's what I'm going to say next. The next meeting of the school board will be on July 6. So that will be your reorg. It has to be within the first seven days of July. So that'll be July 6. Pre-agenda for that meeting is next Tuesday before our special meeting regarding health insurance. I'm going to be, I'll, I'll have Mr. Perino, since he's still be on the board, run the pre-agenda meeting. I will still show up, but I'll have you run the pre-agenda, if that's okay with you. And then we'll move from there. So does anybody have anything? By the way, congratulations to all of our graduates in Middletown next week. Right now, graduation is set for 6:00 Friday at Fowler Field. Get there early. I don't know what time it opens. Typically, 4:30, I think, because it's early.
4:30, 5:00.
4:30. Now, the decision, the decision, I'll let Dr. Eastwood address what happens in case of weather and how that decision is made, when it's made by, and where it will be broadcast.
That's going to be an interesting question because we're going to wait till the last minute to see what the weather is at that particular time. So we'll try to make it as early, or let's call it as early as possible that day. We will also have alternates given rain, what the process will be, and that will be on our website. So you can look at that.
And a reminder that the, the day starts on Friday with the senior breakfast in the morning. The board is invited to attend. I think that starts around 7:00 a.m., 7:30? Are you going to be there? What are you doing afterwards? Did you want to do a tour of the high school for the board?
We can do that if they want.
Is anybody interested in taking a tour of the high school after the breakfast next Friday to see construction before the summer ends? No, it would probably be more like 8:30, 9:00, 11:00, right? Huh? Do you guys have interest in doing that? No? Rose?
Possibly.
Possible. Two? You two?
It would be a tour of the high school building.
Just, just understand that for those that can't make it, all you have to do is ask and we'll provide that to you anytime you want to go through. We'll get, we'll get that taken care of.
It would be Friday after the senior breakfast, so sometime around 8:00 or 9:00? Okay. So it doesn't, I don't want to waste your, you guys' time. And if, if weather's a touchy issue, you're going to be busy trying to figure things out, so we, we won't do that. The seniors have practice after the breakfast. And then we have Golden Grad. Can I get a show of hands on who's showing up at Golden Grad? That's it?
Four, at 20, four at 20.
It's 4:00. That seems late. Is it always 4:00 or is it 3:30? Okay, so 4:00. Linda will be there. Lou, are you going? No? Darrell? Rose? No? John?
Possibly, yeah.
All right, two. I have to go. Vince or, or John? Are you guys planning on going to Golden Grad? Okay, you're not going to be here? All right. And who's coming? Are you coming to graduation or no? You're not going to be at graduation?
I'm going to be at graduation.
Okay. And you're not. I am. You're going to graduation. Will you be at grad? Linda? Darrell, you're going to go to grad? You'll be at Monroe's? And you're not going to go?
Rose, you going?
You're not going or you're, okay. So the only one, and I think Paula will, Paula's definitely going to be there. So we're all set. So we're all set. Folks, it's been a pleasure. Mr. Wilcox, thank you very much. Thumbs up. Please have a safe summer this year, and Godspeed to our school district and everyone who's taken part. Thank you very much, guys.[1781.62]